Council, I'd like to call this committee the whole meeting to order with adoption of the agenda. Someone want to make that motion for me, please? Council Orlando seconded by Councilor Lucio, all in favor? Motions carried adoption of the minutes of the committee of the whole of October thirteenth. Someone want to make that Council Palmer seconded by Council Jerry, all in favor? Motions carried any business arising from those committee of the whole minutes. Saying then, we're going to move on to staff reports. We are now into financial planning, budgeting process and schedule. So I will turn it over to you, Ms. Moore. And I'll let you and Ken go right at it and explain to us about everything budget. And Mr. Black, he's waving, I don't think he's waving at us, but he wants to understand budgets too. All right. Shannon, we'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Mayor Solz. I'll let Ken take the lead here with presenting and just giving a review of the report and timeline. That was prepared in this meeting package.
Perfect. Go ahead, Ken. Thank you.
Okay, um, the report before you highlights the process that we'll be following to complete the city's two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven financial plan and the major steps that we'll be going through. The city last produced the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-six plan in the previous year, and that will be the starting point for our review of the upcoming plan. The city normally does longer term plans, particularly for capital fifteen years, and we'll be carrying on that practice and we'll be completing a five-year operating plan. So in terms of the process itself, central to that process is a core budget review and coming up with a base budget for two thousand twenty-three that reflects the ongoing operating costs to maintain services at the current service levels. This is important that we isolate that cost so that we can figure out on an ongoing basis what it looks like to maintain services at the city of Revelstoke. And as part of that process, the first step is that we come out with a base operating budget and plan for two thousand twenty-three. And to do that, we look historically at revenues and expenditures. We look at the twenty-two year-end projections. And we look at all the factors that are changing and would impact two thousand twenty-three. And we also isolate out one-time spending or revenues from ongoing and also special funded programs that aren't a specific part of ongoing operations that may have dedicated funding or are special type initiatives. So that's the first major step in the process where we come up with a base or core operating budget that's really needed to maintain services at the city of Revelstoke. So at the next juncture, we also come out with a base capital budget and plan, which would be based on what's in the existing capital plan. And we would undertake a review of that plan to see if there were any changes in projects in terms of timing, in terms of estimates, and in terms of whether there's still a need for those projects. And so as part of the the operating and capital budget review, the next step would be to have a submission of capital and operating spending packages. And that would be for new initiatives and services that are not currently in the plan. And so we would go through a process of having departments submit spending packages on operating and capital for anything they want to add to the overall budget and plan. And this is a way of prioritizing what should actually be in the budget from a corporate perspective and an overall organizational perspective. So after we have done that, we would bring those spending packages forward to council on a ranked basis with what staff determine to be the priorities for adding to the budget. And so at that point, council would be approving the base budgets and also any spending packages that would be part of an overall financial plan document, which would be going forward for public comment and for feedback from the public. And so at that point, there would be, after that, there would be a presentation based on what council determines to be the provisional financial plan going forward to the public for formal comment. But in the meantime, to get up to that point, there would be a communication strategy with the public to inform them of the process as we go along throughout the entire process so that they have opportunities in various forums to comment and provide feedback along the way throughout the entire budgeting cycle. After the feedback is received from the public, council will consider that feedback and make a final decision on what the budget and the financial plan will look like. And that will form the basis for the tax rates and the financial plan bylaws and the utility rate bylaws, which will be coming forward to council for first three readings and adoption. So from a macro perspective, that's the the process. As I say, central to the process is coming down to core budgets and we'll be taking a very close look at what's in the existing twenty-three budget that was compiled last year to determine what it is, the cost of truly maintaining services at the existing levels. So as part of that, we will be taking an extensive look at every revenue and expense at the city and will be compiling also a list of changes in the core budget, which will come forward to council to show them exactly how the the overall base budget has changed due to a number of factors that will, of course, be disclosed to council. So that's my summary, and I look forward to looking, working with staff and Shiana and all of council to rationalize and come up with a financial plan that fits council's objectives and goals as well.
All right. Thanks, Ken. I appreciate that. I'm going to go to council to see if they have any questions in a moment. But just when we're engaging with the public, the the way we engage regarding the the budget will be done in layperson's terms so the community can understand. Is that correct?
Yes, we're going to try to make it as simple as possible.
Yeah, perfect. Appreciate that. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Borger? Counsel Palmer and Counsel Orlando.
I'll start with an easy one. So you have in the schedule recommended updates for fees and charges. So counsel, I think last year did staff brought some minor changes to the fees and charges. There was quite a few, I believe, but it certainly, there's lots of areas that there needs to be increases. And so I'm just wondering how that's gonna, is that, it says by November thirtieth. So how how is that being done? And I'll use an example in the fees and charges. So business licenses just went out, they're fifty dollars a pop. And that's like, doesn't even pay for administrative costs, let alone anything else. And in, so I did a quick check with other communities and it's, you know, in the two hundred and fifty-dollar range. And I don't know how many business license we have, but that's a fairly significant loss of potential revenue on fees and charges. So anyway, that's, there's a few things in there, but like, when, when, when is that done? What staff bringing back to counselor? How's that being done?
Ms. Moore.
Through your worship, I'll address specifically the business licenses. The whole bylaw needs to be updated. There's a schedule of over a hundred different fees for business licenses. And we've talked about putting it into different tiers. So it's not this retail shop of this size pays this much and and this mechanic shop pays this much. It would be consolidating it into different tiers so people get grouped into basically a more broad grouping, and that's the fee they would pay. Business licenses range from fifty dollars for like a secondary suite, suite up to probably a few hundred dollars and even more for a vacation rental. So this whole bylaw needs to be revamped in terms of the fee structure. And I would probably see that coming forward in a separate process than the annual fees and charges by law update.
All right. Follow up, counselor.
No, that's good to know.
Counsel Orlando.
Yeah, your worship. Thank you. A question for the interim finance director. The budget process has always evolved over the years. And I'm wondering this year, what are, are there any changes over the past most recent couple of years? And if so, what are they?
Through your worship, and I'll let Ken chime in as well. Ken worked with us in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen and helped us set up several templates and a fifteen-year long-term plan moving from five years to fifteen years. So a lot of what we're doing is just diving into the details, making sure everything is where it needs to be and using Ken's templates that were brought in back in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. The process itself is quite similar in terms of requiring spending packages, bringing them forward to council for feedback, going out to the public, getting their feedback and bringing it forward before the deadline and having all the bylaws completed by May fifteenth. I can let Ken chime in here because he did play significant role a few years ago here.
Ken?
Through your worship, I think I would see the major change this year as being a little closer look at what is in the base budget so that we can be confident that everything there is exact in terms of what is needed. Within a budgeting process, there are certain assumptions that gets made and certain estimates that get made. And so as part of this process that we're going through, we'll be very sure about reviewing all the assumptions and estimates that go into a budget. And so I think there's going to be a bit of a closer look, as I say, as what's in the core budget.
Mr. Borger?
I'd like to add that, so to the question raised by Counsel Orlando, what we're going to attempt to do differently is, when you look at the fifteen-year plan, which I have read, it's very good, it's very detailed, but it has an incredible ability to just basically convey to the public and explain reserve levels, debt levels, operating fund, sewer fund, the water fund, the relationship between those three funds, the annual surplus, how we build our our statutory reserves, how we handle DCCs, et cetera. What we're hoping to do is take some of those items and really in a very simple illustrative way, convey to the public that this is where we sit with our surplus and our debt, and this is where we sit on these different funds. Here's our capital budget, here's our tax rate, and really just give a very simple explanation to some of these things. My three and a half months here, I've asked a lot of people in the community on what's your opinion on the state of the city finances and municipal finances? And I've had all kinds of crazy numbers thrown out there, and they just simply don't know. And so my hope is, and our hope should be, let's simplify this and give them exactly what they need to know. And it's all in that fifteen-year plan. And so I encourage anyone to have a look at that. We could certainly get you a copy because it sort of lays the foundation and defines all those specifics. How do surpluses relate to reserves? And each year, how do we adjust the tax rate to meet this objective? Because the fifteen-year skeleton has already been established. I mean, we've got the the template, what I call the bones for the next fifteen years. It's just annually making adjustments on operated and capital. But you have to know how all those things interrelate with each other, and that's all laid out in the fifteen-year plan.
Follow up, counselor.
Your worship, thank you. I think, and thanks to staff for the responses. I do appreciate those. And just by way of a quick comment, certainly I've seen over the years to the budget process, a certain presentation to my staff that have been really illustrative of what's going on and help questions like reserve funding and how that all works. I think the unfortunate thing from a communications perspective is that's done serially. So we have a great report done three and a half years ago at one meeting, but that's not available to everyone for a baseline understanding. I just have one more question through your worship, and that is looking at this process here, it looks like up until February ninth, most of the process is going to involve staff, with the exception of the fees and charges by less updates, working through the finance department to bring a presentation package forward. I'm wondering if there's going to be options for interface with council during that segment of the budget process, such as through meetings of the finance committee? Or I'm just wondering how far it's going to get along before council has a sort of first look or ideas about some of the the core issues and decisions staff, senior staff are making.
Yeah, so if I, if I go shyman and Mr. Mayor, great question. It's always a delicate balance. Staff have to do the homework and and get the numbers prepared so we can present to council sort of the draft form of the entire budget. But make no mistake, this is council's budget, right? This this budget belongs to the people. You 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 represent the people at any time. You can ask for a finance committee meeting. You can ask to be brought up to date of the work that's been done irrespective of the proposed dates. This is sort of a proposed schedule for the next budget cycle. At any time council would like to call a finance committee meeting, you're all on that meeting, we can do that. Because again, it's your budget, and you have to feel comfortable and know exactly how it's being created. These are proposed dates. They're certainly flexible.
Yeah. And we'll, you know, my intention with the finance committee is having everyone weigh in and be able to sit around the table. What we've been doing in the past is once a month to have a finance committee meeting. If we feel that we need to have more, then we can do that. We can talk about that sort of thing. So that we're kind of on the same page as to what Ms. Moore and Mr. Borger are trying to do. And we kind of have an understanding of what direction we're going. And then we can ask questions about that to kind of do that direction. So that's the intention of the committee.
Your worship, thank you so much. And and sorry, just to tag on one last question that I think would maybe helpful, your worship. For anybody who does not know, we have a deadline. Municipal finance ministry requires us to submit a document by a certain date in early May, I believe. And what is the date this year?
May fifteenth, is it?
May fifteenth, that's correct.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Counsel Palmer?
Just briefly going back to fees and charges again to Ms. Moore. So are are there going to be numbers brought back to council for changing before that November thirtieth? For this recommended changes?
Any comment, Ms. Moore?
Through your worship, we are planning on bringing forward the changes in January. We are splitting the bylaws into two typically. We used to have all of our fees and charges in one bylaw, including utilities. Because the utilities follow the budgeting process quite closely, how much we're charging for sewer and water, we have chosen to separate that out into a different bylaw, which will follow the schedule of the financial plan by law update. As for the regular fees and charges, this is everything else, the the various fees that the city charges, parks and rec, business licenses, development fees. Those will be coming forward to January twelfth committee of the whole would be the first time that council will be seeing those changes.
Okay, so then, okay. And then one of the so on the the five-year and fifteen-year financial plan and talking mostly, what what I can be referring to mostly is on the the capital budgets. Okay, what are we really, you know, those real, real things that we're doing? And I'll 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 take the opportunity right now to critique the five-year versus fifteen years. So the five years, the legislative requirement, the fifteen-year was implemented, as you said, somewhere around two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Really good intentions. My observation, however, is the it it's hard to get any sort of sense on real projects that we do in the five-year, let alone the fifteen, fifteen-year old term. So that's just something, you know, I guess to be cognizant, okay? Are these just, you know, just some fanciful numbers or without a whole lot of thought? So that, and then perhaps more importantly is, okay, well, where where are we going as as a council in the next four years? And those major projects, so there's been some discussion with the previous council on things like, you know, a new multiplex, for example, and that's not reflected in the budget right now. There was different, some things were changed around, but what are we really going to do? And so it becomes this cart and horse kind of thing with strategic plan, which we have next week. But if we have, you know, whatever those priorities we collectively decide on, paving programs, other capital works kind of things. And so to have a real strategic plan, or sorry, a capital plan, five-year capital plan will be, will be pretty challenging, I I think. For this year, we'll do the best we can. But those are just sort of some comments that, and I know that's kind of difficult, a little bit difficult. So I don't know if there's any sort of response, but that's just kind of some observations as we move ahead. And the importance of our strategic planning, how important that's going to be.
Yeah, that kind of gives staff their marching orders as how we move forward and what we're going to do, that sort of thing. And then that can be integrated into the budget process. So in response to Counsel Palmer's comment, Ms. Moore and Mr. Borger, any comments or anything that you would like to highlight or discuss before we move on?
Yeah, through you worship, I think it's true to say, as you far, the farther you go out, the more difficult it is to estimate and budget for particularly capital projects. So generally, the closer in on the timeframe you are, the more exact you try to be and the more solid you want your plan to be. But it's important to have a picture of the future, even though the future may not be as exact, so that we can look at things like debt levels into the future or we can look at the reserve levels, which we need to be aiming to set aside so that we can minimize debt into the future. So it's good to have that macro picture from a looking at reserves, for example, from a a longer term point of view or debt from a longer term point of view. So I I do understand that the farther you go out, that things become less clear.
And and I wholeheartedly agree with the the theory behind that. I think our practice in the last few years is like, just one year out, has been pretty inaccurate. The just a quick comment on the the two tiers on the on the fees and charges separating out the utilities from the the regular stuff. And I think there's a big educational piece here too that, but separating out, I think that's a, I think that's a great idea. The previous council talked about changing how utility fees are are done, keeping them separate because there's confusion on the fees versus taxation. And is that on the on the radar at this point or?
Ms. Moore, so we we talk, I'll let you speak to that.
Sure, through your worship, it is on the radar. It's it's something that I'm planning for. It would, it would be a full year out, so the beginning of two thousand twenty-four to break them out. It will take some time in planning and getting staff trained in order to do the full switch, plus a communication strategy to the public in terms of how we're rolling out it out and what the outcome is for residents who are on our installment plan or when to be expected to be built for utilities. So it'll be a bit of a process to make that switch because they have, historically, the utilities are billed at the exact same time as property taxes once a year. But it is on the radar and is in the planning of the the finance department.
Great.
So for those of you who are new on council, previous council talked about separating the fees and charges for the water and sewer into separate bills, whether they're billed quarterly, yearly, or whatever, and not included in the taxation bill that one gets once a year so that people know exactly what they're paying and how it's done. So it's just a matter of figuring out how that's going to go up to the community and in what format. So am I correct on that?
That's correct.
All right. All right. Follow up, counselor.
Yes, another question. So politically, the game typically happens. We go through all this budget process and we've got, you know, it's from a staff perspective and from the consultants. It's, you know, there's substance, there's rationale, there's good work and all the the machine. At the end of the day, it becomes this game of attack, a percentage. And there can be little games that are played with that game as well as what what does two percent or three percent mean? And I I'm sort of predicting for next year, or for this budget, for the two thousand twenty-three budget, that percentage is going to be of significance more than it's been for the last couple decades because of inflationary pressures. And, you know, we we've already, you know, on the labor side, we've gone out to four percent, made a commitment for four percent increase on the labor, which is ballpark fifty percent of our things. So there's a two percent automatic, two percent tax increase just on the labor component, let alone any inflationary requirements. I I and I guess maybe directed more to Ken on, you know, well, I guess both. How how challenging is this inflation or do we have a sense of like, you know, the the numbers are being thrown out? We hear them in the news, you know, the eight percent or whatever annual increase. And, you know, I'm just on in regular inflationary pressures. And of course, you don't know exactly where it's going to go, except you've got Canada rates going up, the landing rates going up. That's going to ultimately affect any kind of ventures that are coming to renewal and stuff like that. That's going to be a huge impact. And then the fuel prices. So there there is a lot of pretty significant pressures. And I I I guess the question that I have, I'm sort of wondering, well, where is this going to land politically? And you're not going to be able to say that, but what what's this percentage looking like for next, for the two thousand twenty-three? And do you have a a sense that you're willing to express publicly, I guess, in this meeting as to where we're gonna, you know, or magnitude, you know, are we, are we looking like? We've got the four percent QP increase. Are we going to be able to keep this within four percent? Is, you know, are other inflationary, are we talking eight percent? Are we talking something higher? If you have any comments on that.
Mr. Borger, Ms. Moore, any comment that you would care to venture into?
Through your worship, I think it's too early to to kind of put a number on that. But I think that we'll be looking for avenues to offset inflationary costs and other pressures, as you mentioned. And to give you one example, you know, their major expenditure within the the city budget is the RCMP contract, for example. And there are a authorized number of members at the RCMP and but that would be fourteen members. But on a regular basis, the RCMP contract has been underspent by approximately four hundred thousand dollars. So the question becomes, can we budget a more realistic amount to take advantage of what has historically been the vacancy pattern within the RCMP? So there's things like that that may have a offsetting So there's things like that that may have a offsetting impact, should I say? On, and there are several things that we have to look at on what are those inflationary pressures and things like that. So I think it's a little early to put numbers to things, but the other thing that we need to think about too is, is, you know, there's a cyclical nature to many of the revenues. And I'll name a few in the development services area, for example. You know, development fees go up and down depending on what's going on in the economy. And so there are certain development fees, like in the last year, that have went up quite a bit in terms of revenue. But we're having to predict what they'll be going forward. And so some of those revenues may have a positive impact as well. And so it's a complete picture we need to look at. And we can't kind of think right now as to where we're gonna land prematurely, I guess.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Through your worship, I would, I would just second what Ken, Ken has said. It's too early to really put a number on anything. We'd be naive to pretend that inflation isn't high right now, and there's certain costs that are just out of control, like fuel prices. Although Ken and I will be reviewing everything in a lot of detail to see where we can find these offsetting costs or revenues to help with inflation.
Great. Appreciate that. All right. Any other follow up?
I'll contain myself.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Okay, we'll carry on. Any further presentation or comments that you'd like to make?
No further comments for myself. Ken?
No, nothing further for me.
Thanks. So I'll go ahead, go ahead, counsel.
So one of the things, just thinking of my colleagues here, municipal budgeting one oh one. Because we're talking about utility fees, like even, even after you're playing this game for a long time, it can be pretty confusing, the different structures and the debt, the way debts are done and all that stuff. Anyway, it's a thought that we might have a need for
An education process?
Yeah, just an hour and saying, well, this is what, this is all sort of the basics.
Yeah, we'll leave that to Ms. Moore and Mr. Palmer to come up with something for us.
We could certainly do a quick thirty-minute overview, high level, on Tuesday. As part of the orientation, I have no problem. You know, just sort of breaking it down in its simplest form. We don't, we're not gonna be diving into the budget, but we can certainly talk about the the drivers of the municipal budget process to assist a better understanding. I've been doing it for so long, I think it's quite simple, especially when you look at a template like a fifteen-year horizon. You know, I basically break down operations, you've got labor, which is a big chunk of our budget, staff. So quickly, three point five million U P, Q P, one point five million exempt, that's five million dollars in labor. And you've got materials and supplies, all the things that we buy. And of course, you have utilities, right? And that captures roughly, I mean, I'm missing a few things, Shiana, but that captures roughly eighty-five, ninety percent of your operating. It's the capital that fluctuates every year, right? To Counselor Palmer's point, your strategic priorities will identify your capital wish lists and what you want to build and do. So that fluctuates every year, but it's that better understanding to my point earlier. Where are your reserve levels? What's the difference between statutory and non-statutory reserves? What are your surpluses? Budgets are organic, your policies, the tax rate is your bylaw, budgets can be adjusted. They don't have to fit in every single line perfectly. You're gonna have overages and underages. We can talk about that. But yeah, at first, it's, there's a lot of moving parts to it, but I like to break it down. There's operating, there's capital, and there's the five-year financial and all the different parts in it. There's the three major funds, the general, the water and the sewer. We can certainly talk about that.
All right. Any other questions from Mr. Borger or Ms. Moore? Well, thank you both. I appreciate your time, kind of giving us a little taste of what's to come.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, counsel, we have nothing further on our agenda to discuss. So I'm basically gonna ask for termination of the meeting. Someone wanna make that motion, Counselor Cherry, Counselor Stapenhurst, all in favor? Motion carried. This meeting is now over. Thank you.